We're ready, okay. Good evening and welcome. First, I'd like to start by apologizing for our delay in starting our meeting this evening. We have just exited from executive session. We'll be returning after we finish our business meeting. So if we could start this evening now with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, tonight's agenda is our reorganization meeting. We do this every July. It is a quite lengthy agenda, but it is a lot of important school business that we do every year. We're going to start with the oath of office of our newly elected trustee. I, Cynthia Tate, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, the County of Eastchester, the Town of Westchester, the State of New York, according to the best of my ability. Thank you, Lauren, and thank you Cynthia for serving. Again, thank you, congratulations. And to all my fellow members, thank you for your service because this is time away from your families and your work, and it's greatly appreciated, so thank you. Okay, next, nominations and election of board president. So I'm, I guess, on nomination.
My name is Abigail. And I nominate Michelle Lysio as board president.
Do we need a second? How does that work, Lauren? We need a second?
Second.
And we need a second. Dash, okay. I don't know that, am I supposed to be even doing this? Okay, all in favor, I guess? Okay, okay. Do I, we have to do something?
All in favor.
Oh.
Good afternoon. I, Michelle Lysio, do solemnly swear.
I, Michelle Lysio, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of president.
The duties of president.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District.
Town of Eastchester.
Town of Eastchester.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you, Lauren. Now we go on to nomination of board vice president. Okay, nominate, I would like to nominate Cynthia Tate for board vice president. Is there a second? P, all in favor? Cynthia will now take the oath for that. I, Cynthia Tate, solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, the County of Eastchester, the Town of Westchester, the State of New York, according to the best of my ability. Okay, and move on now to number five, appointed district clerk. Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, hereby appointing her to the position of district clerk, third pleasure of board for 2018-19 school year, at annual rate of pay of $11,402. Motion? All in favor? Discussion? All in favor?
You have to give it to her, yeah?
Okay. Repeat after me. I, Lawrence Gorsky-Truell.
I, Lawrence Gorsky-Truell.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
For the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, the Town of Eastchester, County of Westchester, State of New York, according to the best of my ability. If I could just for a minute thank Lauren for all she's done for the board, especially last year. We had quite a few of our elections for the bond project, much of her time, many, many hours spent, and we really do appreciate and are grateful for your work with the board. So thank you, Lauren, for continuing to serve. Number six, appointed district treasurer. Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Faith Sparks to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2018-19 school year. Motion? Rob, second P, discussion, all in favor? And Faith will administer her, Lauren, actually, our district clerk will administer the oath of office to Faith tomorrow. So thank you, Lauren, for that. Number seven, appoint a claims auditor. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Michael Oliveri to the position of claims auditor to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2018-19 school year at the annual rate of pay of $10,790. Motion? P, second, rob, discussion, all in favor? And again, Lauren will administer the oath of office to Michael tomorrow. Okay, presentations, oh, I'm sorry, comments of the board. I'm not sure if anyone has comments. We do have a lengthy meeting, but if anyone would like to say anything? No, I'm not for the sake.
No.
Okay, thank you. Comments by the superintendent, Carl?
I'll be brief. This is our annual reorganization meeting, which is required under New York state law. This is a very robust agenda with a lot of contracts, a lot of business information. I would also like to say that, you know, the district is very busy throughout the summer. I want to thank the board. We are in the process of organizing a board retreat to set goals for the district, which will be rolled out early in the school year. The administrative staff is working very hard over the summer months. We also do an administrative retreat, and we have a number of staff members, teachers running summer programs, counselors, support staff that are here and doing a lot of summer work as well as planning for the upcoming school year, so I appreciate all their efforts, and particularly our custodial staff. There's a number of renovations. You'll hear about some of these. The architect is here from KGND, Mr. Russ Davidson, and he'll talk a little bit about our capital project plans and just some things that we are doing at this point. But for an example, we are doing some asbestos removal down at the elementary school. Everything is being done through state education department. It will be supervised with the appropriate controls in place for air quality. We're planning to do four rooms and renovate them and have them open for the beginning of the school year, and a number of other projects, including library upgrades, creating some new classroom space, and a lot of painting and tile replacements. So there is a long list, and we appreciate the work of Ms. Liu, as well as the custodial staff, which will make a lot of that work happen over the summer months. And at this time, I'll turn it back to Michelle.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, next up is KGND. I'm sorry, Russ, for keeping you waiting, but thank you for being here tonight to give us an update.
So I'll be really quick because you've got a big agenda. And so just a quick update on where we are with your capital project and a few of the related items. We're going to talk mostly about schedule and administrative. There's really not a lot of new design work been done. It's really developed what's been there and next steps and project costs. So I said that when we filed SED, there would be a lot more drawings. This is the list of drawings. This is the half-size set. There's 98 drawings now that describe the small Cottle project. So a great deal of work has gone into it since we last saw you. And one of the things that's happened is we've met several times with district staff and administrators, and we're really into every light fixture, every light bulb, every material and finish. So that picture is of this board right here that shows, for example, a chlorotile pattern. And you'll remember the collaboration stages and that bit, the learning that happens there, the orange sort of spills out into the hallway and the blue. The orange and blue are accent colors, and it's really good, solid, neutral colors that will be timeless and last for a long time. And this was reviewed twice with district staff and pretty well received, and this has all made it into the specification. So it's really just developing details. But the real thing that we, I wanted to talk about, if this doesn't freeze up on me. No, don't do this. There we go. This was our original schedule. This may, you may recognize this, and we talked about submitting to SED on June 19th. We made that deadline. It was submitted exactly on schedule, and that what we were originally budgeting for SED review and approval at 30 weeks. So that would get us to this bidding and negotiation in January of 2019 and starting in March 2019. You'll see that we said very clearly SED review terms cannot be guaranteed. Right now, SED is at 38 to 40 weeks. But there's a possible solution here. We also talked about this third-party review process that was brand-new when you were making your decisions to vote. It's interesting that it has started to work. And what, in a recent email from SED, when we filed your project, we put you in both lines. We put you in the conventional line, and we put you in the third-party review line. It didn't cost anything to get in that line. Within a day of getting in that line, they called and said, "We can assign your project to a third-party reviewer tomorrow." And I said, "Well, we need to review that with the district. We contacted Lee and Carl, and we're here tonight to go over that with you, to see if you would make the decision to do the third-party review." And anticipating your first question, "What does that get us?", the SED administrator said, "Well, it had some problems starting up, but there's been 200 projects approved through that method in an average time of six weeks, not 40 weeks." So this schedule in front of you uses that six weeks, but that means that if you decided tonight to get into that third-party review process and pay that fee, we'd probably be approved sometime in August, which is way before we need to be approved because we would still not want to bid the project till January, because that's the ideal time to bid, and you can't start that much earlier. And if you bid really early with a late start, you'll get people guessing at cost escalations and other things. So the third-party review process looks like it makes both projects really viable for summer 2019, robust construction. We've, obviously, we've submitted the Cottle project, so we know what that cost is. So let's talk a little bit about the third-party review process because that's the most important topic of tonight. I already mentioned that it started in March of 2018. Your project is ready to go. 200 projects been approved in about six weeks. The regular lineup is only one to three weeks for architectural review, but it's 38 to 40 weeks for an engineering review. So you can't get a permit until you have both reviews done. So that engineering review is really a problem because that means, when we do the math on that, that means that an approval wouldn't be any earlier than the end of March for next year. So that means we would be bidding in April and May, and that probably would push the steel erection into the very end of the summer, or maybe even the early fall. So that's not an ideal solution. It really delays the cost, the construction start by two to three months. Third-party reviews do require a fee. You have to pay this other architect and engineering firm. Your fee, based on the cost of your project, is $20,300. We've shared this invoice with Lee and Carl. This is not, this is not something you're paying us. This is something you're paying upstate BOSI's who hires these third-party reviewers. But cost escalation is really outpacing this problem because cost escalation is going up 1.68 percent per quarter. So that means for your project, that's $111,000 of cost increase for every three months you wait. So if the regular queue is going to take you two to three months, your bids are likely, you can't guarantee any of this, but this is what's published, but your bids are likely to be $80,000 to $100,000 more by waiting. And it also gives you a problem logistically in erecting steel over an occupied elementary school. So common sense and logic would say that that fee buys you time, which actually saves you money on your bids. So I know it's a little different to be paying extra fees for a faster review, but this is the best system that SED could come up with to deal with these backlogs. So we would recommend that you authorize the third-party review. So it should take the guesswork out of getting the steel erected, which we all knew was such a big, a big issue. And we're frankly, cautiously optimistic that this third-party review process actually seems to be working, and it could be a real good thing for both projects. I don't know if you have any questions on that. Yeah, Carl and I talked about this briefly, and we need to study that a little more. That's a required exit from the building. So even though we could move entrance traffic to another door, it's still a required exit. So we might be able to create a temporary exit and start that a little bit earlier, and we'll look at that. But my guess is we're going to need that as an exit pathway. Exit pathways, even over small sets of construction, are not, not ideal. So the rest of this is just to review what you've seen before. There has been no change to the design of the upstairs. We're all very excited about it. We've worked very closely with the district on it. We've worked out all the furniture. It's the interior views, as you may remember. There you'll see the collaboration spaces in the hallway, the sort of fun furniture we talked about in one recess, the exterior appearance of brick with the new window and the maker space upstairs. And as you come down the street, you'll be focused on that maker space. You like that? You want to go back to that, or you want us to explore going back to that? It is. There's a couple of reasons that we're just trying to keep it a little thinner so we didn't have to go back down to the ground. Just bear with me a minute because we thought you might mention something about this. So at the end, we have, and this is before we raised the center section. And I think once we raised the center section, this didn't work quite as well, and I think that that really is going to make that maker space special. But we can look at sort of a hybrid version. The brick is a little more traditional. Well, you know, maybe we should look at it at a different meeting at this point. It's, you know, not something we should just. We already have. It's filed at SED this way. This is what we showed in May. And so this is what's at the state, but if we need to change the facade, we'll. Yeah. Yeah, the, the reason that we changed the brick and brought it up is when that center window became a bigger thing and we raised the roof, the white looked disjointed. It didn't run through, and we wanted to introduce a little color. And I think the current solution is actually going to feel better in the neighborhood. And I would say it's a natural development. And what we're all going through is we all kind of liked this at the time, but that's why you develop designs, to have them, you know, grow and get better theoretically. The, so, and this is the back, the double classrooms, so this is really, there's never that much grass. There'd be a fence running across there. And this is what the caddies will see from the golf course, but it is nice. And that, you know, those, those rooms behind the blue there is this room. So it's got a folding partition, and it's really going to be, I think, a very heavily used space in Cottle because it's the one big room that you'll have for community meetings and PPA and the like. And then just to remind you, we are doing the security vestibule and handicap ramp at the front entrance, and that will change the way that looks. We've developed that, and, you know, it does come out on the sidewalk, but you still have sidewalk and some plantings. And we are replacing the field with a natural grass, multipurpose rectangle, no dirt infields. So this way you can use the field in many different ways. You're not going to wear down one section necessarily, and two backstops will be provided. We've finished the one estimate. Everything looks on track. We are now working on a second estimate before bid based on the final bid documents. Some of the next steps are to update that estimate and finalize a list of add alternates for bidding. You know, we do have most of the fall to work these out, but two things have already surfaced. An add alternate is something you ask bidders to price as an extra. And the reason that these are here, these are things that were never included in the bond. These are things that during the design came up as things that are good to do, so we agreed to design them, and let's see how the pricing comes in. The first one was, we originally thought this was necessary to replace the corridor ceilings in the entire existing building because the first analysis was the piping, we would need new piping to get heat to the new addition. Well, thankfully, after we got up into the ceiling, the original designers anticipated building that second floor and oversized the pipes to the 92 addition. So they've already put in the bigger pipes, so we don't have to do those ceilings. Since we already drew it up, we said, "Why don't we get a price for you and we'd update it?" So that was never part of the scope. We've designed it, let's get a price. The other one is a little bit more life-safety focused, which is we have to do a new state-of-the-art fire alarm system for the second floor of the 92 wing. We don't have to do it for the lower floor, but since we're replacing the ceilings on that floor anyway, it seemed to make sense to price out updating the fire alarm on that floor as well. So those are two add alternates that we're looking at now. We've also started the process of designing the work for the middle high school. The playing field is pretty straightforward. We don't see any problems there. But the original scope of work inside the middle high school had a number of general construction things like security and doors. Those are easy to figure out. It also had some mechanical and HVAC work, which we're looking at the possibility with Lee Liu of an energy performance contract. So until that sort of shakes it out, we don't know what's going to be in the SED set and what's going to be in the energy performance contract. So we know that leaves away for a week or two, and we'll be finalizing that. But we are moving forward on the middle school, high school project. We'll get that to SED late summer, early fall. We'll do one final round of cost estimates with CalGIE, and then, of course, it's bidding and negotiations and on to the construction phase. There has been a couple of things that we've helped out with, and we enjoy a good relationship with Lee and Carl, and, you know, we were happy to help you out with a little design work to move some things around. That was not something that was part of our scope, but we're happy to help you out as a courtesy to the district. Have we removed consideration of solar panels? We haven't eliminated that from consideration. That's something that could be done as part of an energy performance contract. We have not included it in the capital work to buy solar panels, but we can talk to energy performance contractors about that. The roof will be adequate to support solar panels. But it's, you know, for us, the June 19th is a big push. We thought that would have gotten us through the regular queue. We made it. Unfortunately, during that period of time, the SED review periods went from 30 to 40 weeks. So this third-party review really looks like the best way to go right now. It would be slightly different, but you can see a column now for the middle school, high school project. So we're planning to get this to SED no later than October. And the only reason we're waiting for that is we need this EPC thing to shake itself out. But with a six-week, with a third-party review on that, that means we would have approvals by early December. So we would actually bid the middle school, high school, and Cottle at the same time, right after the first of the year. So that would allow the field person to order the carpet. So it's really only a three to four week, pull up the carpet and put a new one down. So this might even be done before the end of August if we can get this early start. We probably will bid your field separately from the rest of the middle school, high school project. It's a specialty contractor. You know, there's four or five, and if we bid it through a general contractor, there's just going to be a markup, and we're going to deal with the subcontractor anyway. So that would be on its own schedule, and, you know, literally as soon as possible they can get on there. Even earlier, if you, if you, you know, I don't know when you stop activity on that field, probably late May. probably late May or early June. As soon as the activities are done, they vacuum up the infill, get rid of the old... Four to six weeks. That's it. Yes and yes. The, there's a lot of different infill materials. Right now, you have a good-performing crumb rubber field. And we would make an open bid for a good-performing crumb rubber. There's alternative types of infill. And we can talk about that in more detail. Some districts are going with some of them. And they're thought to have advantages from an environmental or health point of view. Frankly, we have not seen any published evidence that there's anything wrong with crumb rubber. And it's got the best performance track record and the lowest cost. And most synthetic turf fields have crumb rubber, maybe with some sand mixed in as their infill. And that's what you've had, and it's served you very well. So we will bid it probably for, it's a public bid. So we have to make sure that there's three reputable manufacturers that can provide competitive pricing on the one specification. And we will probably write sort of a generic spec in between the three major manufacturers of fields for conventional crumb rubber film.
Okay. Thank you, Russ. It's really exciting to see all of the interior, the materials, the interior design, and all the interior finishes. I did have one more question, Russ, about the interior finishes. We had some conversation about refurbishing and some work that we're doing to existing classwork. So those finishes, will they be the same, you know, for whatever work we do on the first floor?
Yeah, Lee has learned the name of our interior designer and has her number. So yes, we have helped you with color selections on the abatement work that's, we just filed on last Friday.
Right.
So that's all coordinated with all the colors that you saw.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Russ. It's really exciting to see all of the interior, the materials, the interior design, and all the interior finishes. I did have one more question, Russ, about the interior finishes. We had some conversation about refurbishing and some work that we're doing to existing classwork. So those finishes, will they be the same, you know, for whatever work we do on the first floor?
Yeah, Lee has learned the name of our interior designer and has her number. So yes, we have helped you with color selections on the abatement work that's, we just filed on last Friday.
Right.
So that's all coordinated with all the colors that you saw.
Okay. That's good news. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Russ? No. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on with our agenda. Approve the consent agenda. There is a very big consent agenda. And this is all, a lot of the items that we do every July, a lot of reappointments. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? Anything they want to pull out? Or is everyone okay to prepare to vote on the consent agenda as it is? Is there a motion? Pete, second. Second. Rob? Okay, the discussion was the discussion I just had. Did anybody have anything there? No?
No.
Okay. All in favor? All right. So let's still get through this consent agenda. Okay, we'll move on to business of the board. Okay, first, we have the second reading of policy. It is policy number, do we have the policy number here? Policy 8505, meal charge and prohibition against meal shaming policy. As Lee had discussed at the last, our last meeting, that this is a state mandated, if I believe is correct, a state mandated change. And it has to do with pricing of our meals for student lunch and the way that basically no students being denied lunch. And there's specific language that the state mandates we put into our policy. And that's what that is. It is on our website. And if anyone has any questions or any comments, and they want to get that to us, that's always welcome. We're not going to vote on that because they're going to, there will be a third reading at our next meeting, and it will be up for a vote at that time. Number two, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has informed, been informed of a donation to be made to the Tuckahoe Athletic Scholarship in memory of Augie Nardone at Tuckahoe High School. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the Eastchester Eagles Sports Club in the amount of $750. Motion? Pete, second. Cynthia? Discussion? All in favor?
If I may, Michelle, I just want to thank the Eastchester Eagles Sports Club. And I had the honor of working with Augie Nardone many years back. And he was a wonderful man. And it's great that the community keeps this scholarship moving forward. We appreciate it.
Also, it's very fun, competitive, little competition that we have with
Yes.
Eastchester High School and our varsity basketball team, as well as our faculty. And every year, it's very well-attended. And it's a great showing of community support in honor of Augie Nardone. Number three, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Educational and Management Services for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, at a rate of $500 a month for STAC services not to exceed $6,000. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number four, approve a contract. Resolve to approve a contract with Symmetry Physical Therapy Services for athletic trainer services at a rate of $4,500 a month for 30 hours a week, not to exceed $45,000 for the 2018-19 school year. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? I'd just like to add that this has been a very valuable addition to our athletic program.
Yes.
Much-needed physical therapy right here, that we have it right on our staff to have a trainer. And it's been a great addition. All in favor? Number five, award child nutrition contract. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited child nutrition bids seeking a food service management company. And whereas bids were opened on June 14th, 2018, and whereas Aramark Educational Services LLC was the only entity to submit a bid. And whereas the school district's food service consultant, HMB Consultants, has reviewed the bid proposal for Aramark Educational Services LLC, and has recommended that the school district award the child nutrition contract to Aramark Educational Services LLC for the 2018-19 school year. And whereas, after reviewing the bid for Aramark Educational Services LLC, the school district has determined that Aramark is a responsible bidder, and now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby awards the child nutrition contract to Aramark Educational Services LLC for the 2018-19 school year at the costs submitted in its bids according to terms and conditions of the bid documents. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District is authorized and empowered to execute the child nutrition contract with Aramark Educational Services LLC. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and school district administrators are authorized and directed to execute any documents required and to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Cynthia? Discussion?
Hey Carl, is there a reason why there was only one bid?
You know, I, Lee could probably speak to this better, Peter, but, you know, Aramark is the big player out there.
Okay.
Not only in schools, but it's a huge corporation. And, you know, they're able to, I guess, make it profitable for them. And they were the only bidder. And they've been with us for a number of years, and they are responsive. So we think we can work with them to improve some of the offerings down in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Number six, appoint a school attorney. Resolve to appoint Keenan Bean as Board Attorney for the 2018-19 school year for retainer fee of $65,000 for general counsel work, and a retainer fee for $27,000 for negotiation services. Anytime spent on matters that fall outside either retainer arrangement will be billed at $225 per hour for services performed by attorneys, and $125 per hour for services performed by paralegals. Is there a motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
Michelle, if I may just say, Keenan Bean is with us now for three years. This will be the third year we're beginning. We're very pleased with their services. They're very responsive. This, I want the board to understand, is a $5,000 increase for their retainer fee, which provides us unlimited access to legal services. They gave us no increase last year. So this is the first increase we have, and we do see it as being fair.
Mr. Carl, will this will be our third year, or have they already been our attorney for three?
I think we are entering our third year.
Third year.
Yes, our third full year.
And I will agree with Carl. We've been very pleased with their representation. And, you know, and the fact that they did not raise us last year, I think is fair. Any other comment? All in favor? Number seven, award a bid. Resolve to accept the lowest responsible bid for plumbing services for the 2018-19 school year from William J. Bell Plumbing and Heating, Inc., Yonkers, New York. Motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? I would just say the next few of these bid awards or extending up contracts is mainly for maintenance work that we will be doing this summer and throughout the school year. And this is something we do every July. Number eight, award a bid. Resolve to accept the lowest responsible bid for snow removal services for the 2018-19 school year from JMA Landscaping, Inc., Eastchester, New York. Is there a motion? Pete, I'm sorry, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number nine, extend a contract. I'm sorry. Whereas on or about July 12th, 2016, Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bids, proposals for air conditioning and refrigeration. And whereas on August 10th, 2016, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for air conditioning and heating to Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating of 312 Spook Rock Road, Suffolk, New York for the 2016-17 school year. Whereas on July 5th, 2017, the Board of Education extended the contract, awarding to Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating of 312 Spook Rock Road, Suffolk, New York for air conditioning and refrigeration services for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018 at the same compensation. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of school district's contract with Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating for air conditioning refrigeration services for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district, the contract with Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating for air conditioning and refrigeration services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with Joe Lombardo Plumbing and Heating for air conditioning and refrigeration services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia? Discussion? I just want to say that I did speak to Lee about these contracts being extended, that we are allowed to extend for up to two years.
Yes.
And I think the important thing here to note is that there is no increase in the compensation. They are at the same rates. And it's Lee's recommendation that we extend one more year. And that's what she's done here. All in favor? Number 10, extend a contract. Whereas on or about July 12th, 2016, Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bid proposals for heating services. And whereas on August 10th, 2016, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for heating service to Oilco Heating Corp. of 10 Stewart Place, White Plains, New York for the 2016-17 school year. Whereas on July 5th, 2017, the Board of Education extended the contract awarded to Oilco Heating Corp. for heating services for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018 at the same compensation. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with Oilco Heating Corp. for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with Oilco Heating Corp. for heating services for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district, the contract with Oilco Heating Corp. for heating services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with Oilco Heating Corp. for heating services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia? Discussion?
Just a quick question. Just, I know we talked about on the last night and before that, for services such as these plumbing, heating, air conditioning, oil, I mean, those are, there's a lot of competition for those services. So I understand that they're extended, but one year at a time, it's like someone told me we extended twice. So my question would be, before these extensions occur, was there an open bidding process to see if there was another provider who might provide them for cheaper?
I believe, and again, Lee Lu can speak to this in more detail, Rob, but I believe we don't do an open bidding process every year. Lee, I think, does some comparisons. She will speak to other business officials. If we're satisfied with the work and we did a bidding process, let's say, two years ago, or a year ago, then she, in some cases, extends it. But certainly, nothing would stop us from doing that if we thought we could get better prices. And from time to time, we do.
And to my understanding, we will have to go out to bid after this, because we cannot extend again.
Yes.
So next year, we will have to go out to bid on everything.
Yes, absolutely.
All in favor? All in favor? Okay. I'm sorry. 11? Okay, I'm sorry. Extend a contract. Whereas on or about March 31st, 2017, Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bid proposals for facilities management services. And whereas on July 5th, 2017, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for facilities management services to ANA Maintenance of 965 Midland Avenue, Yonkers, New York for the 2017-18 school year. Whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with ANA Maintenance for an additional one-year period from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same terms and rates. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with A&amp;A Maintenance for facilities management services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same rate as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract for A&amp;A Maintenance for facilities management services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with A&amp;A Maintenance for facilities management and services. Motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
I'll just say that Mr. Anthony Russo, who's been with us, I believe it's year four now, he's a consultant for facilities projects, and Anthony has overseen dozens and dozens of projects. A lot of it occurs during the summer. You may recall the dumpster at the middle high school, that area being moved. We needed some storage sheds behind Cottle. Anthony has 30-plus years of experience working with schools. And again, this is more for project-based work. We are also, it's important for the board to remember that we do have in this year's budget a position that we intend to fill with a Director of Facilities Level Two. We have not filled that position yet, but when we do, then I believe Anthony Russo and A&amp;A, the need would diminish. But that may take some time. It could take several months. We have to go through a civil service procedure and process and work from their list. So, for example, this summer, there are a number of projects lined up, and this will be the company, and the gentleman, Anthony Russo, will be overseeing those projects. He does excellent work.
So the amount then that we're approving is the same as last year, $44,000? It's up to that amount? It may not actually be spent then if we scale back?
Correct, Peter. It's up to that amount. That's what we spent last year, and if we do fill that position, for argument's sake, you know, in the fall or mid-year, then we probably, in my opinion, would not spend up to that $44,000.
So could we, could I make a suggestion that we, like, maybe cut that number in half? Because the way the resolution reads, it's for the whole year. And our intention is really not to use the service for the whole year, because we are looking for that Director of Facilities. If, for some reason, we can't fill it, and then Lee would come back to us, and then also, at the same time, it would give us the opportunity to let the community know that we are not going ahead with the Director of Facilities at that time, and then we're going to stay with Anthony for the rest of the year. I think it's just a way to kind of keep on top of it and be able to, instead of having an open amount, which is for the full amount of what he was paid last year.
Yeah. Michelle, that would be fine.
Right, but we're extending, we're extending the contract. Right, okay, so it could be more than that amount. Thank you, Ellen. Well then, then we may not be able to do that, what I suggested, because it's not a dollar amount. It's a rate.
Yeah, yeah. It's a rate of...
It's a rate, right. So he's agreeing to keep this rate for the year?
It's the same rate. We pay $400 per eight-hour day.
Right, so if we were to do a six-month contract, six months from now, he may raise his rate. So it's actually in our benefit to lock him in for the year.
Okay, and we'll see what happens with the Director of Facilities.
I would think so. And, yeah, we will keep a close eye on this. If it's not needed, we will not use it.
Okay.
Right. You can just not do it, yeah.
All right, thank you, Ellen. All in favor? Number 12, extend a contract. Resolved to approve the one-year extension of the transportation contract with Academy Bus Company through the 2018-19 school year at a 2% CPI. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Taj, discussion.
Just that we've been with Academy for many, many years. They're reliable. They have a good fleet that they maintain, and their drivers are also, you know, very, very reliable, and there's a good group of employees. We appreciate them not going to the maximum allowable. They came in under that. We do appreciate it.
All in favor? Number 13, approve a summer transportation contract. Resolved to approve summer transportation contract with Royal Coach Lines for the period of July 2, 2018 through August 31, 2018 at a total anticipated annual cost of $54,009.59. Motion? Pete, second. Second. Rob, discussion. All in favor? Okay, guys, I know it's getting late, but stay with me here. Stay with me.
Wait, I just have a question, though. Is that for, is that for the summer programs? Okay.
Number 14, extend a contract. Whereas on or about August 8, 2016, Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bids proposals for roofing services. And whereas on August 29, 2016, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for roofing services to J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. at 1187 Yonkers Avenue, Yonkers, New York for the 2016-17 school year. Whereas on July 5, 2017, the Board of Education extended the contract award to J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. for roofing services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018 at the same compensation. And whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. for roofing services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. of 1187 Yonkers Avenue, Yonkers, New York for roofing services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. of 1187 Yonkers Avenue, Yonkers, New York for roofing services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with J. Salvatore &amp; Sons, Inc. for the roofing services. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
So this is like as an, like an as-needed basis? Is that what this is?
Yes.
And do they get paid per day, I guess?
Yes, no, it is as-needed with roofing repairs and work such as that, Cynthia.
All in favor? Number 15, extend a contract. Whereas on or about June 12, 2014, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bids proposals for electrical services. Whereas on July 1, 2014, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for electrical services to Scotty Electric Corp. of 22 Hollis Terrace South, Yonkers, New York for the 2014-15 school year. Whereas on July 1, 2015, the Board of Education extended the contract awarded to Scotty Electric Corp. for electrical services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016 at the same compensation. Whereas on July 7, 2016, the Board of Education extended the contract awarded to Scotty Electric for electrical services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017 at the same compensation. Whereas on July 5, 2017, the Board of Education extended the contract awarded to Scotty Electric for electrical services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018 at the same compensation. Whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with Scotty Electric for the electrical services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with Scotty Electric Corp. of 22 Hollis Terrace South, Yonkers, New York for electrical services for an additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation as the prior year. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with Scotty Electric Corp. of 22 Hollis Terrace Road, Yonkers, New York for electrical service. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with Scotty Electric Corp. for electrical services. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion.
So it sounds to me as you continue to go through basically what these are, or we're engaging these companies as service contractors.
That's correct.
So when there is an issue, they are bound to provide service?
At a given rate.
At a given rate.
Yes.
So my guess is then, we're receiving some sort of pricing sheet based on the services they provide, or is there an hourly rate? Like, I'd be curious, is it based on an hourly charge for their services, or is it projects?
I believe it's hourly, Rob.
Is it union, like, is it union, I mean, there's probably a process, is it union work?
Yes, licensed electrician is union work, and again, these companies are only brought in, we're showing you what we spent last year, they're only brought in when needed. But there's ongoing, you know, with our buildings being, you know, aging buildings, there's ongoing need for electrical, for roofing, and masonry. So yes, yes, but their prices are competitive.
And I guess where you're doing it is based on their pricing being competitive in every item.
Exactly. Because it's the lowest responsible bidder, so...
And also, the pricing being below what it would cost to have somebody full-time on staff with that expertise. I mean, you know, if we were a larger district, and that amount was well above $100,000, you say, well, maybe it's worthwhile for us to hire somebody full-time, but certainly at $22,000, makes sense to contract it up.
Peter, absolutely. You bring up a good point. Some larger districts do have on-staff an electrician, a carpenter, a plumber. We're just not big enough, so this is a more cost-effective way for us to operate.
I do just have one question, only because I did think I understood Lee to tell me that you can only extend the contract for two years. And this one seems to have been, yeah, so, I mean, I'm okay, I'm just a little confused by that. But we could follow that up with Lee and see.
I'll make a note. We'll have Lee double-check this, but I know she's very diligent about following all the legal requirements.
Yes, okay.
We'll take a look.
Yes, thank you. All in favor? Number 16, extend a contract. Whereas on or about August 8, 2016, Tuckahoe Union Free School District solicited bid proposals for minor repair services. And whereas on August 29, 2016, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District awarded a contract for minor repair services to T-Square Construction, Yonkers, New York for the 2016-17 year. Whereas on July 5, 2017, the Board of Education extended the contract awarded to T-Square Construction for minor repair services for the additional one-year period from July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018 at the same compensation. Whereas the Board of Education has determined that it is in the best interest of the school district to extend its contract with T-Square Construction for minor repair services for one additional year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education approves and authorizes the extension of the school district's contract with T-Square Construction of Yonkers, New York for minor repair services for additional one-year period from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019 at the same compensation as the prior year. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute on behalf of the school district the contract with T-Square Construction of Yonkers, New York for minor repair services. And be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education, the Superintendent of Schools, and the officers and administrators of the school district are authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to cause compliance with the contract with T-Square Construction for minor repairs and services. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Taj, discussion. I did have, basically, 16 and 17 are both contracts with T-Square for work that's going to be done. In 16, it just says minor repairs. And the only reason I bring it to attention is because this summer, it is a little bit different, because we are doing refurbishing in classrooms, and there is more work than we would normally do. And like Ellen had just pointed out earlier, it's not for a specific dollar amount, but for a rate, a rate up to what, and for what scope of work. So I would just like to see for both of those, 16 and 17, 17 is more specific, because it does give a dollar amount for the whole project that we're talking about, but 16 does not give the scope of work. So I don't want to hold up any of the work, and I'm okay to go forward with it, but as long as it's provided to us so that we can see exactly specifically what work they're doing and the priority of the work being done. So where is 16 for the classroom work, and 17 for the office renovations? Then I'd like to see it done in that, you know, that scope for both of those and see how that's going to be done.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, Michelle. What I think may work for the board, and let me know, is as we line up the projects, and as I said in my introduction, we have a number of summer projects happening. The board allocated money for classroom painting and furniture and other renovations. So I think maybe if we reinstate, usually we don't do a Friday update to the board throughout the summer, it's as needed, but I think we certainly could provide you with a Friday update on our, not only our schedule of projects, but also our progress. We do them in stages. We do have a lot of programs here. We have summer camp programs. We have our own school programs happening, so we need to work around them. But we can continually update you on that schedule and the completion of work throughout the summer, if that's helpful.
Okay, so do you, I know Lee's not here. When they're, this resolution, 16, when it just says minor repairs, do we know what kind of work that is? I mean, does that involve any of the classroom work, or is that separate?
This, well, we've worked with T-Squared for a number of years. They've done work for us in the past, obviously, and they're showing last year $26,000. Lee would know more detail about the work, but they'll do things such as, you know, putting up a divider wall. I believe, for example, last year down at Cottle, I believe they did the work to create two smaller special classrooms out of one large classroom. So there was carpentry, there were walls installed. So that's the type of work they do. They may be called upon to do some work in classrooms, but this would be, you know, you have one resolution that basically allows us to use them as needed, like the roofer, like the electrician. The number 17 is a more specific resolution, and we didn't get to it yet.
Right, okay. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Number 17, authorize office renovations. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District seeks to create a new office as well as an additional classroom for existing office space in the Tuckahoe Middle School. And whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has extended its competitively bid contract with T-Squared Contracting, Inc. And whereas T-Squared Contracting has proposed to complete the proposed renovation of existing office space pursuant to the terms and conditions of its contract for $19,925. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes the renovation of the existing office space in Tuckahoe Union Free School District to be completed by T-Squared Contracting for a sum not to exceed $20,000. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and powers, the Board of Education...
The President.
Okay, the President of the Board, Superintendent of Schools, and the Director of Finance and Facilities to each individually take any and all actions necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution and to execute any documents required to affect the purposes of this Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
So I'll elaborate a little bit more. This specifically is work up in the middle high school building. As most people know, we have our central office administrators here. We don't have space at Cottle for that. And basically, we had a few goals in mind with this design, and you heard Russ Davidson earlier say he provided designs as a courtesy, no charge to the district, and we appreciate that from KG and D. But basically, what we're doing here is, we had three goals in mind. One is to maintain conference meeting space within our school and central offices... conference meeting space within our school and central offices, those are for team meetings, collaborative planning meetings, and parent meetings. We also needed a small office for our Director of Special Ed, but we also wanted to create a strings classroom, an instructional space, we have a thriving strings program, they've been working out of this auditorium, but they're frequently displaced, and that, in my opinion, was not educationally sound. We have a growing program, and I'd like to support it, so what we're doing is, we're more or less taking our administrative staff and moving them, or squeezing them into a smaller space, maintaining conference area space, and also creating a small strings classroom as a result of this resolution. And T-Squared is the company that we would like to do the work, they've worked with us before, they do quality work.
Okay, and is that budgeted for under our operations and maintenance budget, or is that a separate?
Yes, I believe this would come under the operations and maintenance budget line.
Okay. I mean, my only concern with that is, and I understand the needs and everything that you just spelled out, and I agree with all of that, it's just that I would like to see that the classrooms, because that is what we really stressed during the budget hearings, was that we really wanted to see the renovations in the classrooms take priority, and I'm all for doing this work, and as long as it's budgeted for, and we can afford to do it, but in the priority of the classrooms being done first. So that's my only concern, and I don't know how that gets executed in that manner, I don't know how we can specify that.
Well, Russ Davidson mentioned, you know, the highest priority is an asbestos abatement project at Cottle, and that's a matter of health, safety, and welfare. We are doing that through state ed, controls will be in place, air quality testing, everything that is required under the law. So that's probably the highest priority, that's four classrooms fully renovated. After that, we would like to tackle additional classrooms, and Ms. Lou does not have an exact schedule, the goal would be to do as much as possible before school opens. That's always the ideal. Potentially, we may have to do some over the break, and we always do some upgrades over the break, school breaks. But the goal is to do that, Michelle, and I think a weekly update to the Board, we can keep you posted on progress.
And just to reiterate for the public, too, so we have 15 classrooms is what we budgeted for in this budget to do, 15 classrooms. So you're saying we'll do as many of those as we possibly can before the school year starts?
Absolutely.
And then the others will be done at breaks.
And Peter, if I could emphasize, you know, the 15 was an estimate, for example, with furniture, you know, we, what we learned, you know, early on in the budget process, we didn't have exact pricing on furniture, we did coordinate with K G and D and some of the furniture we have for the new construction. So what we've learned, for example, is in a primary classroom, furniture's smaller, and it's roughly $6,000 per room. But, for example, in an intermediate or middle school classroom, it's almost double that, it's somewhere around $10,000 or $11,000. So there may be a slight variation, but I think still, you know, an estimate of around, approximately 15 classrooms total, district-wide, I think we're still on track to be very close to that.
I would just, I'm sure we will be meeting again over the summer, a public meeting to do appointments, last-minute appointments, we normally do that in August, so if at that time, we can have, by then, of course, we'll have a more of a comprehensive plan of what we've been able to do, and then a timeline for what will still be done, and when we will be able to accomplish that. I think that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. We'll make sure we provide it.
All in favor? Number 18, authorize third-party review. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed that it may expedite the approval of the New York State Education Department of its plans and specifications for the capital projects recently approved by the school district's voters by utilization of a third-party reviewer program at a cost of $20,300, which program is being administered through the Center for Instruction Technology and Innovation of the Oswego County Board of Cooperative Educational Services. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves utilization of the third-party reviewer program offered by New York State Education through CITI BOCIS for the review of its plans and specifications for the capital projects recently approved by the school district's voters at a fee of $20,300. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and empowers the President of the Board, Superintendent of Schools, and the Director of Finance and Facilities, to each individually take any and all actions necessary to affect the purpose of this resolution, and to execute any documents required to affect the purpose of this resolution. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion.
I'll just say, I mean, Russ Davidson, I think, did a good job of explaining why this makes sense. Lee and I met with him last week, and when we saw this opportunity, Lee and I fully agree that the $20,300 is money very well spent, we should get early approval before the school year begins, getting a jump on the bidding process in the long run will save money, and I think it's a very good investment.
Is the cost get allocated to the capital projects?
Yes, good question, Rob. This money is, it comes out of the capital project, not out of operating budget.
Right.
And Russ had said by bidding earlier, we probably would be saving money, because things just get more expensive as you go along, so by being able to bid earlier, there could be a savings there also.
Absolutely, and it guarantees us that target construction date of summer 2019.
Which is the most critical for me.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it's worth the money to get that construction started that summer.
Okay. All in favor? Number 19, approve architectural services. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District desires to perform asbestos abatement in four classrooms in Cottle Elementary, and whereas Tyre Garment and Davidson Architects, P.C., has provided a proposal dated June 26, 2018, to provide architectural services for the asbestos abatement in four classrooms in Cottle Elementary School, including but not limited to preparation of construction documents and project specifications for bidding, preparation of documentation for New York State Education Department and Construction Administration Services, to be billed at hourly rate below for time spent providing such services up to a sum but not to exceed $14,500. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves retention of K G and D Architects, P.C., to provide architectural services for the asbestos abatement in four classrooms in Cottle Elementary School, in accordance with a proposal dated June 26, 2018, at the hourly rate below for time spent providing such services to a sum not to exceed $14,500. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes and powers the Assistant Superintendent for Business to execute the proposal of K G and D Architects, P.C., dated June 26, 2018, for asbestos abatement services. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools and Director of Finance and Facilities are authorized and directed to execute any other documents required, and to take all action necessary to affect the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion.
If I could just mention that asbestos, when it comes to asbestos, you know, people, of course, rightfully so, have serious concern about this, it's important for, I think, the community to know that our elementary school, as well as the high school, built in elementary, the original building, 1950s, the high school, you know, 1930s, it was very common to use asbestos for tile. And we have other floors in our buildings that are asbestos. Now, it only becomes an issue when that floor tile starts chipping or cracking, and these four classrooms were inspected, so we do an annual inspection every year here in the district, we did an additional inspection for these four particular rooms, and it was determined that due to wear and tear, chipping, cracking of tiles, that we needed to do this sooner rather than later. There are some things you could do to try to hold off, but we, it was determined that this summer would be the best time to tackle this project, it is expensive. It is also aidable, though, which we're pleased to know, we get approximately 25% back, but grand total, this is about a $100,000 project for four Cottle Elementary classrooms. Questions?
I guess what's the, there's a schedule, isn't there? What's your purpose of that?
And that's just their fees?
Those are the fees. Those are the fees that, for the different levels of architects that could be working on it.
So those are the architectural pay times?
Yes.
And how much they charge? Now, this is not to exceed $14,500. You said that it's a good cost.
And I'm sorry if, I'm sorry if I was confusing, so that would be to, after the asbestos is safely removed, that's what this is for, then additionally, we have to replace the floor.
The total cost of the room?
Total cost, to have fully renovated classrooms at Cottle, four classrooms.
Right, that includes ceiling, paint, you're saying it's not $100,000?
Not new ceilings, but maybe some replacement tiles, Rob, as needed, but painting those classrooms, brand-new floors, replacement floors for, you know, ones we're removing.
And then the last question, are they performing the what? Just for the architectural and submission to SED?
Correct, this is just for K G and D's architect, and, you know, their architectural work and submission to SED.
Anything else? All in favor? Number 20, approve annual renewal policy. Resolve to approve the annual renewal policy with the New York State Insurance Reciprocal NYSIR for the period beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending July 1st, 2019, in the amount of $81,862. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion. This is our liability insurance?
This is required insurance, there's a slight increase, it looks like about $700 year-over-year, but this is required.
All in favor? Approve, number 21, approve an intermunicipal agreement. Resolve to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign the 2018 intermunicipal agreement for street resurfacing repairs of asphalt concrete. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion.
Just that this is advantageous for the district, we, together with the town, the village of Bronxville, Eastchester School District, Tuckahoe School District, we bid together, and we do get better pricing as a result, and this just allows us to contract out for any blacktop or sidewalk repairs.
All in favor? Number 22, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Dr. Carlos Soto Longo for psychiatric evaluations and consultations at a rate of $600 per evaluation for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $3,000. Motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion.
I will just say, the next several agreements are for our Special Education Department, psychological services, psychiatric evaluation services, and other related services for children with IEPs.
All in favor? Number 23, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve the contract agreement with Contreras Translation and Interpretation Services, Inc., for translation services for the 2018-19 school year, as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $8,000. Motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 24, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve the consultant agreement with Achieve Beyond for therapy services for the 2018-19 school year, at rates as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $10,000. Motion? Pete, second. Dodge, thank you. All in favor? Number 25, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement for homebound instruction services with ABC Tutoring for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, at a rate of $57 an hour, not to exceed $30,000. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, all in favor? Number 26, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Dr. Ben Strober for psychological and educational assessments for the 2018-19 school year, at a rate of $275 an hour, not to exceed Motion? Rob, thank you. Second. Pete, discussion. Carly, these, for these psychological services, they, evaluations out, and assessments are outside of our own schools' evaluations, or?
Yes, this is an outside service performed by a psychologist, if there's required psychological and educational evals that need to be done, from time to time, we will use this service. If you want more detail, I can invite Dr. McDonnell up, but that's basically.
All in favor? Number 27, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Westchester Therapy Solutions for therapy services for the 2017-18 school year, at rates as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $175,000. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion.
So if the price jumps are down, what type of services do they provide? And if this is an ongoing services that they provide, have we considered hiring someone for that to replace them?
Good question, I know, I'm going to turn over to Ellen, I know occupational therapy is most likely one of these services. Ellen, do you want to elaborate?
Yeah, it's a good question, right, that we get to points where there will sometimes be the right time to start looking to hire another full-time person. One of the challenges with some of the services that Westchester Therapy Solutions provides for us is that the students are not here, they're not housed here. Some of them are, and some of them are in other locations, that then we, you know, provide some services there as well, so it doesn't necessarily turn into an ideal job for one individual to do, they need to be in more than one location. We do have one occupational therapist that's an employee of ours, we don't as of yet have full-time for OT, they're different services as well, PT's in there, and they're not the same service, so, though that dollar amount sounds like that is more than a human, there's actually different specialties within there.
Do you have an idea, Ellen, and roughly, how many children get this therapy?
Say again?
How many students get this therapy?
I do not have that number for you, no, I certainly can pull it for you, but.
That's okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we have dozens of students who receive occupational therapy.
So isn't it dozens?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor? Number 28, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Avalon Exterminating Company, Inc., for a twice monthly pest control program for Cottle Elementary at a rate of $185 per month for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $2,220. Motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion.
Is this the firm that we hired in the middle of last year to replace the one before? We were happy with them, I know we had a little bit of that issue there, but we were happy with how they responded.
Yes, Peter, you're absolutely correct, I believe they initially were brought on in December, by that time, we did have a great need, or an increased need, for pest management, and we thought they were very effective, you know, the, most of their work had to occur over the breaks, so there was some frustration with, you know, pest sightings, within the elementary school in particular, but we really were impressed with how they tackled the problem, they were very methodical, we kept records, and at each break, they really, really stepped up their efforts, and by the end of the year, we saw tremendous progress, and a significant reduction in pest sightings, so we're pleased, and we'd like to continue with them.
All in favor? Number 29, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Avalon Exterminating Company, Inc., for twice monthly pest control program for Tuckahoe Middle School, High School, at a rate of $265 per month, for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $3,180. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number 30, approve a proposal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approves a proposal from V-Rock Choreography for a cheerleading camp and instructor for the 2018-19 school year, at a rate not to exceed $4,450. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
So I assume, Carla, this is in lieu of the cheerleading team going to the camp like they did last year? Because last year, they actually went.
My understanding, Peter, is that this will be conducted here onsite. It was part of the budget, and that choreography is a, you know, a critical piece of the cheerleading team being successful throughout the season.
So that, I'm sure that's not a one-time thing? Are there multiple days of choreography?
Let me just look at Mr. Goldberg's notes.
I think it was a week or a couple of days. Three days?
The way it reads here, though, I think it is the camp, which I think, which I agree with Dodge, is like a two-day thing, and then, but it also reads as if there'll be choreography provided beyond that as well? Or is it just for the two days?
Cynthia, I'm not seeing a specific number of days, but I can get that information to you.
Okay, so it is just for the two days?
Okay. All in favor? Okay, and we're going to move on to personnel. One, ESY teacher. Resolve to appoint Danielle Dwyer as a teacher for the ESY program at a rate of sixty-two dollars an hour per the TTA contract for the period of July 2nd, 2018, through August 10th, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion?
Just this one and the next one. Extended school year is for children with IEPs that, as per their IEP, do, are entitled to summer services. We appreciate the, both individuals doing the work.
All in favor? Number two, ESY aide. Resolve to appoint Erica Lopez Perez as a teacher aide for the ESY program for special education students on an as-needed basis at her current hourly rate for the period of July 2nd, 2018, through August 10th, 2018, not to exceed twenty-four hours. Motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number three, approve a summer worker. Resolve to approve Dylan McMahon as a part-time worker for up to four hours a day for the period of July 2nd, 2018, through August 10th, 2018, at a rate of eleven dollars an hour. Motion? Cynthia, second. Rob, discussion?
I'll just say, this is a program now, I want to, I believe it's in its fourth year, where we hire our high school students to do some, you know, light maintenance work with our custodial staff. We appreciate, we have ten students this year, we have a lot of projects planned, and we appreciate them working with us, and I think it's a, it's a good experience for them.
All in favor? Number four, approve additional days. Resolve to approve Deborah DeFrancesco for an additional twenty-five days of pay at one two-hundredth of her annual salary, not to exceed eighteen thousand, for the 2018-19 school year. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
This recommendation is for our middle school counselor to pursue referrals from other districts. We have an unprecedented number of referrals for non-residential tuition students that have special education needs coming into our district from various outside districts. As the board knows, I, we're well over one point two million dollars in tuition revenue, and Ms. DeFrancesco has done this for a number of years and done it very effectively. Year over year, for example, we, we added five additional students. I believe we're up to twenty-three total, just in the last school year. A lot of those referrals flow in during the summer months, when our counselors don't work, so this would be extra work to take on this responsibility.
Any discussion from the board? I think my only comment there is that with the hire of the Director of Special Education, the part of this position that would fall under the Director of Special Ed, I think, you know, we've asked for just a little bit more clarification on that, so I don't know if we should, you know, table it to have more discussion about that, or if the board's prepared to vote on it now. I would refer to the board for comments on that.
My only question, and you call, is whether or not this work is work that falls under the job description of the new hire that we made. So in other words, we hired a Director of Special Education, who obviously oversees this work, but is this the work, the actual day-to-day work that's being done during these days? Is it done by that person, or still done by staff underneath that person?
This is, the new Special Education Director, as Dr. McDonald did the past couple of years, will oversee this work, Peter. But, but this is very hands-on, it's very tedious. As I said earlier, we have an unprecedented, unprecedented number of referrals coming in. Just to give an example, when school ended, we had five, five referrals the week after school ended. Last week, we had seven referrals come in, and, and these are very dense documents. They contain psychological evals, psychiatric evals, neuropsych evals, and someone has to go through them in, in, in great detail to first determine whether or not a student is a good match for our existing programs. My estimate, Dr. McDonald, jump in if you think I'm off on this, but I, I would say on an average, for every twelve referrals, twelve to fifteen referrals, maybe there is one student suitable for our program. We're very particular, and we will only take a child into, to an existing program if they are a good match for our Tuckahoe resident students. So there's a lot of detail. We also, we're very thorough. We do site visits, Peter. We do invite the students here to spend time in our programs. We talk to their counselors, their teachers, their special education director, and then there has to be meetings, and sometimes updated evals. So a number of things need to happen, and I don't think it would be possible for the Director to pursue all of the referrals that we have. He has, of course, a lot of other work, especially settling into his first year, but he would oversee this, and this is something that's actually pretty typical, bringing in not only counselors, but, but also special ed teachers over the summer.
And how, has he been involved at all in this process? Like seeing the applications that come in and the referrals?
He is starting to get involved, Cynthia. He's in, of course, you know, this is his second week. So yes, we, I know Dr. McDonald met with him, and I met with him and briefed him on our success in this area, and, and the success has been, has been extensive. We've had, we've had unprecedented, also, different districts. So for example, for many years, we had students from Yonkers, maybe one other. I believe we, and Ellen, jump in, I think we have Pleasantville, Scarsdale, Rye, Yonkers, and I'm probably missing a few others, all sending referrals and also have kids placed here.
Yes, I can give you, yeah, we also partner with Portchester, it's another district that we took on this past year. And to answer the question of, does our new, is our new director involved? Yes. What we're doing for the month of July, since he started on July 2nd, is all referrals that are coming in are viewed by Mr. Spatola, myself, and Ms. D. All three of us are looking at all of the referrals, so we can make sure that we're being consistent and that we're seeing what we have been seeing, and then we will work together to transition me out of that. And then we will learn through this next year to speak to what you were talking about, Pete. You know, whose role is this ultimately going to be? And right now, I gotta tell you, this is one of Ms. D.'s huge strengths. She is an amazing student advocate, and she is fabulous at reading paperwork and figuring out what, what's up with this child. And, and advocates say, you know what? I think we gotta go see this one. I need to see if we can, if we find a good fit here. And she is on the mark every time. So she has a huge skill set for this that is, I've never seen. She's amazing at this work. And so I really would encourage you, for this year, to have her have these days, and then let's have this conversation again, once we have Mr. Spatola up to speed, and we see, you know, what he brings to that specific, specific work, and have this conversation again in a year.
Yeah, I think there's some of the concerns, which I think are very valid, is that, you know, we, we, previous years, you having so much on your plate, needed this help, and now we hired somebody to take some of that load off. So, so why do we need to add this extra expense? But obviously, you just addressed it. You think this transition year, and it's needed.
So is there a way to approach it?
Because we now partner with so many districts, the amount of work, you know, is, is much larger than even just three years ago, when we only partnered with Yonkers, right? So, so by, by branching out to diversify, quite honestly, it's an income base. You, you don't want to rely on just one, one district sending their kids here. You want to find the best mix of children that could work well with our programs, that benefit our children.
Your estimation, Ellen, is, having done this job, is, is the work that's going to be done by Ms. DeFrancesco, is the type of work that a Director of Special Education should do?
Um, not all directors do that work, no. It's fairly typical in districts to have a placement coordinator, is what the title is called, and that person's job is to not only look at the referrals that come in, and, but also our own children who are placed out, and looking at, can they come back? Do we have a program that can work that? Are they placed in an appropriate place? Has, has something happened at their placement that we didn't know about in the last year, and we need to get them out and find them somewhere else? And that off-site work in the summer of visiting and seeing that is tough for a Director to do, who has to still manage things back in the office.
Right.
So, but it comes down to, sometimes, your, your scale of work. How much work is there? We're so small, right, that I would say, five years ago, we didn't need this kind of help. But our special ed population's growing, that's why we created a Director, and, and the workload is, is more.
I'll add one more piece to this, which is, when someone is, is in a neighboring district somewhere in Westchester, and they are looking for a placement, Tuckahoe is not the only place where they send packets to. So they, they may send packets to six, eight, ten school districts, and, and sometimes, you know, just being efficient and, and quick in your response enables you to secure a child who is a good fit for us. In the summer, you know, it's hard to find people who can, who are willing to work, and many teachers and professionals do welcome summer vacation time. Ms. DeFrancesco's willing to give up, you know, her summertime. Of course, she's being compensated, but she is willing to, to make the commitment and, have a, have a very efficient turnaround time, and, and that has helped us tremendously.
Okay.
Any other que, I mean, is there a way that, though, that this is, as Ellen had said, like, is it a transitioning, or is this the way it's going to be going forward? I mean, will we not, will we know that after this year?
Well, I, you know, what I would say is this, I, I think you will always need support staff to be involved in this process. It can never be top-down from an administrator. The state sets it up where it is a collaborative process. The CSE committee, you know, basically has, has, has all different constituents. It has the parents, it has the, the teacher, it has the, the specialist, and, and the counselors, as well as an administrator at the table. So the answer to your question, Michelle, I think is, you know, we should let Mr. Spatola settle in, and I think as he does, he certainly would come back to us with a recommendation for next year, but I think it's too early for him to tell, and, and by the way, if the volume continues to increase, it just may, make good financial sense, as well as just, you know, a good practice for us to continue with this. But I can't say it this time.
All in favor? Number five, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Mark Barnett, a Tuckahoe Middle School principal, effective August 15th, 2018. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion?
I'll just say, we thank Mr. Barnett for his year of service. We wish him well in his career.
Did you want to talk a little bit, Carl, about the, the search now going forward, and where we stand with that?
Sure, sure. We have posted this position, and we have a good number of resumes flowing in at this point. It's late, so we're a bit anxious, but I'm going to move this process along. I will lead the process myself. And we will do screenings, then we will have committee interviews. I've already contacted our PPLT reps. We will have some staff representatives there. We will do an administrative round of interviews, and finally, at the board level, we will present someone to the board. My goal is, by the end of July, to have them start mid-August, and that is when Mr. Barnett is officially moving on.
All in favor? Number six, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Angela Georgie as modified volleyball co-coach and National Honor Society co-advisor. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Cynthia, discussion?
The next two are simply two teachers who retired. They, they did not decide on retirement at the time when we appointed them to these positions, so now that they are formally retired, they are resigning.
All in favor? Number seven, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Joanne Ornstein as modified volleyball co-coach and National Honor Society co-advisor. Motion? Rob, second. Pete, discussion?
If I may, I just, I would just like to thank Mr. Georgie and Mr. Ornstein for their dedication, not only in the classroom, but with all the activities they were involved in, over a period of service. They did an outstanding job. I know that all the students love them, and it's great to see people like them dedicate their time outside of the classroom and provide excellence there, as well as in the classroom. So thank you for it.
Thank you, Rob.
Agreed.
All in favor? Number eight, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Jessica Perillo as National Honor Society co-advisor for the 2018-19 school year. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
As the board may know, Ms. Perillo's is out on maternity leave through February, so without the other two advisors, it doesn't make sense for her to be the only person doing this, so she is resigning.
All in favor? Number nine, appoint a coach. Resolve to appoint Nicholas Parente as modified volleyball coach for the 2018-19 fall sports season at a stipend of five thousand one hundred and one dollars. Motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number ten, appoint stipends. Resolve to appoint the following stipends for the 2018-19 school year. Christine Lorenz, varsity club advisor, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. Tammy Warren, custodian in charge, elementary school, Cottle Elementary School, three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Michael Yorzulo Jr., custodian in charge, middle school, high school, three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. Motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Number eleven, increase teacher. Resolve to increase the teaching load of Jean Heinzen by point two, effective September 4th, 2018, through June 26th, 2019, at a compensation as per the TTA contract. Motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Jean Heinzen.
What is that, what is it for?
Jean Heinzen is doing history, Rob. Yeah. This is an additional class, and this was budgeted for. I apologize for the delay there, but yes, it's a history class.
All in favor? Number twelve, appoint, appoint aid health and phys ed teacher. Resolve on a recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Jason Simone to a temporary point eight appointment as a teacher of health and physical education commencing September 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019. On a step-two MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule, Mr. Simone holds an initial health and physical education certifications. Motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Jason is, I believe, split between the elementary school and the middle school. He worked with us this past year in a similar capacity and did very good work, so he's coming back, and it's a part-time position, as you can see.
All in favor? Number thirteen, appoint a point-six math teacher. Resolve on a recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Valerie Forle?
Froelich.
Froelich. To appoint six temporary appointment in the area of mathematics, effective September 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, on step-seven MA prorated for the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Froelich holds permanent certification in math, seven to twelve. Motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Now, which, what is this one for? Because there's a lot of math.
There are. We had, of course, the two math retirees. Ms. Froelich, though, however, she, she, I believe this is her third year with us on a part-time basis. basis doing high school mathematics. So this is, what we do with part-time teachers, we reappoint them every year. So they're not on a probationary track.
All in favor? Number 14, appoint a leave replacement. Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Erica Conway to a nine-week leave replacement at the position of English teacher at the Tuckahoe Middle School effective September 1st, 2018 through June 31st, 2018, on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? Number 15, appoint a special education teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Kristen Boyle to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher for special education in the special education tenure area commencing September 1st, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2022, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of educational law sections 3012, 3012C, and/or 3012D on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Boyle holds students with disabilities 7 through 12 initial certification. Motion? Cynthia, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Number 16, appoint a math teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Megan Collins to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of mathematics in the mathematics tenure area commencing September 1st, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2022, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of educational law sections 3012, 3012C, and/or 3012D on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Collins holds mathematics 7 to 8 limited initial extension certification. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number 12, appoint, I'm sorry, 12, 17. Appoint a leave replacement. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Joseph Toll to a 23-week leave replacement at the position of guidance counselor at Tuckahoe High School School, effective August 27th, 2018 through February 1st, 2019, on a Step 6 MA prorated of the TTA salary schedule. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Just to say, Mr. Toll has worked with us before. He's done a leave replacement in our high school guidance department. He did outstanding work. He is a veteran, retired high school counselor. He retired from a very high-performing district out on Long Island and we appreciate him taking on this assignment. I think it's very important, especially with the college process, and he has a lot of expertise in that area.
I think it's great that he's familiar with our students, so that's great.
Yes.
All in favor? Number 18, appoint a math teacher. Resolve on the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Alessia Liaise, I'm sorry, Alessia, to a four-year probationary appointment as a teacher of mathematics in the mathematics tenure area commencing September 1st, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2022, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of educational law sections 3012, 3012C, and 3012D on Step 1 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Liaise holds mathematics 7 through 12 professional certification. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Number 19, appoint a math teacher. Resolve on recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Antonette Nardini to a three-year probationary appointment as tenure of mathematics in the mathematics tenure area commencing September 1st, 2018 and ending August 31st, 2021, contingent upon achievement of effective or highly effective APPR ratings necessary to receive tenure throughout her probationary period, consistent with the requirements of educational law sections 3012, 3012C, and/or 3012D on Step 5 MA of the TTA salary schedule. Ms. Nardini holds mathematics 7 through 12 permanent certification. Motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion?
I just wanted to wish all of the new appointments the very best of luck for their sake. They're not here tonight, so they didn't have to sit through all of this. Some of them have very big shoes to fill. So again, best of luck and welcome to the Tuckahoe School family. All in favor?
Michelle, if I may, I did, knowing this would be a very late business meeting, I said to our new hires that we would invite them early in the school year and you could meet each one.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Yes. And welcome them properly.
And we did. We all voted, right? All in favor, yes?
Yep.
Okay. Number 20, approve a stipulation of settlement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the stipulation of settlement date at July 9th, 2018. Buying between the district and the Tuckahoe Teachers Association authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Dodge, second. Pete, discussion? I just wanted to say that this was on the agenda of our last business meeting and we did table it and I'm happy to see that it's being resolved this evening. All in favor? Okay, that brings us to the second recognition of the audience. So that would leave you, Ms. McDonald, if you have anything that you would like to... Okay. Okay, so we will not be adjourning. We are going to go back into executive session and that's going to be it. And continue to have a wonderful summer. Be safe and we will see you again soon.